The meeting to order, ask for roll call please.
Isaac Northfield.
Here.
Josh Johnson.
Here.
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 Ray Mason.
Here.
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 Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, we have our minutes from our regular meeting, December ninth.
I move for approval of the regular meeting minutes from December ninth.
Second.
All right, we motion a second then to approve the minutes from the December nine, 2024 meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those not, same sign. All right, thank you for those that are in attendance this evening. Those of you watching from home, appreciate you being here with us this evening. We have nobody signed up for public comment, and so look for motion adoption of the agenda.
Also move.
Second.
Motion and a second then to adopt the agenda for this evening. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right, moving right along, eight point one. School of the month. High school. Come on up. Don't worry, it'll be just more than just me, so. But I get the, thank you for having us tonight. I do get the honor to do leadoff tonight for Beaverdam High School. Trust me, you will see Mr. Tronson at some point in time, so no worries there. But have the honors to do leadoff for us tonight. So again, thanks for having us. I would like to start off first with talking about our mission and vision at Beaverdam High School. Our mission stating Beaverdam High School will continue to create a safe, inclusive, effective learning environment that empowers students to reach their greatest potential through abundant opportunities. Our vision, Beaverdam High School will prepare and motivate students for a rapidly changing world by fostering critical thinking skills, a global perspective, and a respect for core values of perseverance, responsibility, integrity, diversity, and engagement. Students will experience success today and be prepared for tomorrow. So that stands for our BD pride. Just a couple of quick facts and figures here for Beaverdam High School. You can see our enrollment numbers. Our biggest class is our 11th grade, followed by 12th grade and 10th grade. And our smallest class currently is our 9th grade at two twenty-nine for enrollment. Our school's success plan update, I'm going to cover our English language arts goal, and then Mr. Tronson will step in and take over for our math update as well. So our school's success plan goal number one for ELA. We targeted forty-two percent of our ACT students meeting the ELA benchmark. That would be an increase of three percent over our three-year ACT average. Additionally, our Hispanic students, that subgroup benchmark would perform overall as an increase of by ten percent. As far as how we're managing that and how we're getting to achieve that level is really our keys to literacy, professional development that's been going on all year so far. Our English, special ed, and social studies departments have all been focusing on the comprehension comprehension aspect of things. All other content areas, science, other areas are all supporting the area of vocab. And so far, we've had four sessions on our in-service days that really target that professional learning where teachers can take that learning and those ideas and strategies right back to the classroom. Having seen that firsthand myself, participating in the professional learning as well, there's some really good takeaways that teachers can use right away in their classes, which is nice. Sometimes professional development doesn't always lend itself for that, but I think our teachers really appreciate it, being able to take something back right away to the classroom, try something different in support of comprehension and vocab. Our action steps around that ELA goal, like I mentioned, is the vocabulary and comprehension, and also rolling out of IXL. We talked about that on our visit when the school board was there a week or so ago. So that's new for us this year, but it's our measuring tool for growth and skill building. So not only does it measure our growth collectively in math and in English, but it also can target specific skills for kids to work on. And so it can be really different from one student to the other based on their needs. So that's being utilized in the classroom as well. Mr. Tronson will touch more on our data collection and how that's worked for us so far with our school support, our school's success plan, excuse me. And now without further ado, I will turn it over to Mr. Tronson to talk about our goal number two, math.
Thank you, John. Good evening, everybody. Once again, welcome, and we'll talk a little bit about math. So as you can see on the display there, our goal this year was twenty percent, twenty-seven percent of ACT students will meet the math benchmark, an increase of five percent over the three-year average of twenty-two percent. And additionally, our subgroup Hispanic population will, performance will increase by ten percent. Some of the action steps that we have been doing, we've had an ongoing mathematical practices work. This year, we shifted over to first education from CISA six. This year, I will say that the trainer that's been working with our staff, she comes about a week or so before we meet on in-service, and they do some visits to each other's classrooms, and then they kind of provide peer feedback. And then when she comes in the next time, they review that feedback and touch on some of the strengths and some opportunities to enhance learning. So it's really fully collaborative. It's not just the instructional leader just kind of dictating what's going on. So it's been really nice. Additionally, as Mr. Casper touched on, IXL, we brought in this year for some of our progress monitoring as well as skill building. And then the one thing we were able to expand upon this year was math support throughout the entire school day, not just our math lab, but math teachers being available for students to come in and get reteaching of some material that maybe they didn't do so well on in a previous assessment, given the opportunity then to reassess as part of our reassessment procedure that we rolled out last school year. It's been very successful. Our math team sends out daily to our study hall teachers that have students of theirs to say this student should report to math support. Here's who they're going to see, what room to go to, and then they help get students to that point. There has been, you know, some minor things that kids have said, oh, I already took care of that. And the study hall teacher's like, oh, okay, but now we're figuring out other ways to make sure we get the students there. So like anything new, you got to work through it, and kids are very creative. I'll just say that. So those have been some of the things we've been able to put in place yet this year. Our next goal is our school climate and culture, and I'll have Mr. Gerber talk about that.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Our third goal is on school climate and culture. We use the Panorama program, which is our third year for SEL screener. Based on the data from last school year, only thirty-seven percent of students felt they had sufficient self-efficacy to be successful. So this year's goal is to obviously increase that to the percentage of forty-seven percent by implementing targeted support strategies, fostering a growth mindset. We know how important that is in all walks of life, and creating a more supportive learning environment. So a number of things have been done throughout the year, both with students and staff. So professional development at in-service this fall and throughout the year so far on collective educator agency, the essential role of attachment-based developmental relationships in learning and leading. And we know that those of us that have been in education, good relationships lead to good results, great relationships lead to great results, right? People want to work for people who believe in them, and then you believe in yourself. Students completed a goal-setting form. They continue to do that throughout the term, continue to monitor that. They'll be coming back and doing more goal-setting specifically around behavioral expectations, academic goals, and attendance goals. And then each department implemented a student of the month, which is a pretty cool thing. Departments showing their support towards students that they have in their class. So in the second semester, we'll be looking again at seven mindsets with an emphasis on the mindset, everything is positive. So emphasizing dreaming big, embracing creativity, thinking positively, and acting and adjusting as we go along. So action step again, we will increase student self-efficacy by implementing goal-setting in homerooms focused on academic achievement, behavior improvement, and attendance consistency. Now with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Tronson.
Just a quick follow-up on the seven mindsets. That's our SEL curriculum that we've been using now for four or five years. We started it after the COVID, so it's about five years now. And in there, that there's seven different mindsets, and the one that he covered best aligns with the building that confidence in themselves. So that's why we're going to hone in on that coming soon. As far as data collection goes, this year, we have started using IXL to help with monitoring growth and skill development. For your perspective, you've heard elementary and middle school talk quite frequently about, I-ready. I blanked on that. I knew it was I something, but I-ready. So it's similar, but it's more leveled up for high school level. It's got a lot of bells and whistles in there. It's for us, as somebody explained to me recently, it's not the cake, but it's the frosting. So we're not banking that IXL is going to be the big game changer for us, but it's going to help us know where our students are throughout the school year. I had a nice conversation with Mary when we were on our tour. She asked how that was going, and, you know, I was honest with her. I said, well, we've some hiccups in there, we're learning some things. But now that we kind of know where we're at, we're doing our middle, mid-year assessment coming up in the next few weeks here. And then from there, we're going to be able to then see where they were from the beginning of the year to mid-year, and then start to lay out skill-building plans for students that are behind, and that program does it automatically. And then when the kids engage in those things, it's, we reference it as the arena, it will real-time adjust their growth score as they knock off some of the different skills within that program. So it'll give us more additional information as we go. ELA has been doing more of the skills focus, so they look at IXL and how it relates to the current unit of study that they're in, and they'll match those skill-building pieces that way. So a little bit of a different perspective from each area and how they incorporated that into their curriculum. But like I said, our next step is the full diagnostic coming up here in the next few weeks. And then Panorama, we use to monitor our self-efficacy growth. And Panorama is our social emotional learning survey that we give out each and every year. It's national norm, so what it does is when our kids take it, they find high schools that are similar demographic to us, and they compare us to those schools. So it's not specifically just nationwide, this is what it is. It's schools like us within the nation. So it's pretty, it's really a good tool for us when we gauge that. We also use that data side note to form groups that our counselors can run with students to assist them if they are having other issues that come up throughout that survey. So again, it's a, it's a good tool for us to help us with the data. So being mid-year, we don't have all of the growth at this point, but I wanted to share some of the stuff since IXL is new for all of you in the room. But in ELA, with skills practice, grades nine through eleven, our students to date are averaging proficiency of about three point nine out of five skills practiced, and one out of five is mastered. So they're seeing some good, good skill-building utilizing those tools. Whereas math on the other side, skills practiced again, they show proficiency one point nine out of three point seven practice and one point three five out of three point seven master those skills. So, you know, we're certainly showing some opportunities there for further growth, but overall, I just, the engagement piece is what's most important for me. And we have this resource, I want to make sure we're using it to the best of our ability. The nice thing too is, and this was, came in after I submitted this report, but Rob and I have been talking with IXL, and now we're going to upload their ACT data from last school year, and then that will prescribe skill-building related to the ACT that they can do any time of the day, at home, during study hall, win time, or whatnot. That would be similar to what we used to use, was the preview? Mastery prep we had for ACT before. So now we have this one resource that has it all in there, which is fantastic. So I'm excited to see how that rolls out, which we'll be doing over the next month. As far as self-efficacy goes for data, we did our fall survey, and it's, it's in spring of 2024. We were at the 10th percentile nationally compared to other high schools similar to us. This is in the below-average range. And then we just took the one recently, and thirty-seven percent of students responded favorably. Or at that time, sorry. In the fall this year, they scored in the 30th percentile by responding forty-two percent favorably. So back it up a little bit, thirty-seven was last year, this fall we're at forty-two. So we're moving in the right direction towards hitting our goal, and maybe we will even be able to exceed it this year. And this was determined by our guiding coalition this last summer. We went through all of that data, and this was the area that stood out the most to us that we felt we had the greatest opportunity of having good impact on. So again, that's just some basic data at this point that we're, we have been able to collect. And lastly, I added this in because at the coffee chat and tour, some, we talked about youth apprenticeship, and I got a little excited. It still is good news, but I wanted to give you accurate numbers. And so currently at the high school, we have fifty-eight students participating in youth apprenticeships. That's up twenty students from last year. That's a, that's a pretty big boost. I will say, some of that has come about due to some local partnerships with our smaller trade operations and getting some students in that way. And then our additional boost comes from students who are now engaged in our GPS program. So again, all very positive stuff with youth apprenticeship, and the areas that they're doing them in are listed there as well. And that concludes our formal presentation. Any questions?
I just have a quick question. I saw something about the student of the month program.
Yes.
Could you expand on that a little bit?
Yeah, so that's actually a picture there of a student getting recognized. So what happens is, at the end of every month, the department gets together, and they nominate two students from their department to receive their department student of the month award. Then we get the information in the office, and we print out certificates. And then those get sent to the teacher that the kid has in that area, and then they present it in class, they'll share photos with me. And then we also read all of the names off in the morning announcements. So for example, December's just got delivered to mailboxes today. Wednesday, we'll do the announcement where we highlight all the December winners presented the next one, January.
Do you hear the kids take those home and show the parents?
Oh, I've had feedback. Oh, yeah. Yeah. No, there, I think, you know, it's really interesting because it's, being able to do it for multiple months, they can recognize so many students, right? And so there's a really good wide variety. Max got one, what was that, October?
Yeah.
Yeah, Max got one. Yeah, all sorts of students. It's not just like, you know, people would think, oh, it's probably just all the four-point-os. It's not, because it's based on that month, like who's really done a significant noticeable, you know, work in that area. And the staff are excited as they send me the pictures, so. And then we put them up in the comments.
I've got a really different question with the self-efficacy. Just really interesting, haven't heard a lot about that, haven't heard a lot about using that term before. But you gave the overall for the nine to twelve, and I wondered if, do you ever look, do you look at that data by grade?
Yes.
Like to see, does it increase or decrease as they go through high school, or does it not?
From what I, from what I recall, Joanne, I think it decreased as they got older.
Okay.
And that, I think, without digging into it, I think is because the coursework gets more complicated. Kids are taking more APs, Start College Now, higher level, higher level opportunities than they typically do at ninth and 10th grade. And so I think they, they feel challenged, and then therefore they feel like they're not as confident about what they're doing, because they're being challenged. So that's where we got to talk about that, you know, kind of that growth mindset. Like, it's okay to fail forward, you know, you'll, you'll get there. You just got to adjust and react to what's going on. And that's what'll come through too with some of the lessons from seven mindset, because that's act and adjust is in fact one of their strands.
I just thought that was really interesting, so it was nice, nice to hear that.
You know, prior to the seven mindsets, you know, we really only got data from, oh boy, I don't know why I'm struggling with names tonight, but there was a, well, school perceptions, but then there's also the one that the state does like every other year. But, yeah, YRBS, and some of that stuff is in there because you can add extra questions specific for your school.
Okay.
But Panorama really owns in, because they'll ask a battery of questions that relate to that area, and then based on the responses, it gives you a percentage ranking there.
So as it does with the other things, does it give you specific things to do then to improve your scores where you're, where you're weak in those areas?
Yeah, Panorama does have resources built in to their website that schools can use, not only just for like maybe working with kids in a special setting or a group, but also just some holistic approaches too.
Thank you.
I had some questions about the IXL. You talked about engagement.
Yeah.
That they can engage in that. Is that if they're struggling with a particular competency? And do they, how do they know like that they can go back in and work on something?
Well, they can access the, at any time, but for instance, in math, they set aside certain time throughout the week that they engage in it, where they'll say, go to the arena and work for ten minutes or fifteen minutes.
What about like the ELA? Does that kind of work the same?
Similar, yep.
Is it more voluntary, or is it, kind of the teachers kind of push them a little bit?
So good, good question. So it's expected. Are there some that have not engaged? Absolutely. So we were looking at, I've been talking with both the math and ELA teams and how to maybe increase that engagement for the ones that are not participating. And oftentimes too, and I explained this to Mary, like if, if I am doing well in a particular area, I might get one or two questions. If I'm not doing so well, I could have fourteen or fifteen questions. So when we have ten to fifteen minutes to work on it, the kid with the one or two problems is probably going to have no problem getting through it. But the kid with multiple, that's not enough time. So that's some of the things we've talked about and how to give more time for some of those that might have more. But they can work on it anytime they want.
And is there, I guess, is there a flag that goes off if they're like, something like really way behind all of a sudden?
Yeah, it has like a caution sign with an exclamation mark. We see that, the kid doesn't see that.
Thanks.
Yes?
Russ, I had just one thing. You, you were talking about the use of IXL and its kind of integration or correlation with ACT and some skill opportunities for students. It sounds very voluntary. Are there opportunities to make that more of a genuinely embedded requirement, being as though that's such a high-stakes assessment?
Absolutely. Again, that's kind of the things we, I started talking about with math and ELA. Do we need to tie it to formative work, right? Because the, what they're doing is formative work, which tells us where they're at, what they need. And so I've been laying that out with the team about how we maybe start counting that as a formative assignment. So for example, ELA has used No Write Inc. for many, many years. No Write Inc. will be gone after this year. Like we're running out that contract as we brought in IXL. So they were counting No Write Inc. as formative work. So I don't, so that's where I'm like, we need to do the same with IXL. And not to penalize them for not performing well, but award them the points for taking it with effort so that we can get the data we need and they need to help them grow.
Other questions?
Yeah, well, can you tell me about STEM?
STEM?
Because I saw electrical on there, so that just caught my eye.
Where was that now? Oh, in the YAs?
Yes.
Oh, let me just go forward a little bit.
Yeah, right there, mechanical and electrical.
Oh, so under the STEM umbrella, we have students doing electrical or mechanical, so it could be HVAC or electrician.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
I love that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Other questions?
They just have pathways, and then under the pathways, there's all these different careers. So that's under the STEM pathway.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Probably equally exciting.
Extremely exciting.
So tonight, we have Paul Franz from Baker Tilly is just going to do our annual audit report for the board and the public based on the findings.
Hey, guys.
Hello.
Good evening.
My tone is very clear on your end?
Yeah, we're just making a volume adjustment, but I think you're going to get that.
So there's a little bit of G K, but now it's better. So there's a little bit of G there, but now it's better. So, I'm going to have to run it.
Oh, you're good, Paul.
All right, sounds good, welcome. Thank you for having me. Good to see everybody. As Ryan mentioned, I am a principal of Baker Tilly Milwaukee, and here's your financial audit results and the single audit results as of June 30, 2024. We issued a unmodified, and also known as Clean Mill House, on the 6/30/24 audit for both the financial audit and the single audit. What that tells you, on the financial audit side is the document that I believe you have in front of you, this label of the financial statements. What that tells you is that all numbers in there are materially correct, all necessary disclosures are included within that document. So we hired a certain auditor. This is ultimately the outcome that you're looking at here. It's the highest level assurance that we can provide you. In relation to the single audit, which is at the back of that financial statement document, because the district receives and expends more than $750,000 of federal dollars in the fiscal year. Here are what's called the federal and state single audit. That's where we will choose a variety of brand programs to test compliance on how those dollars were spent. Happy to say that we had no compliance findings during that work, and again, we issued an unmodified opinion. Within the financial statements, I'll stretch a brief thought on financial health of your general fund. In that document, on page six, up in the front, you'll see an L8 related to your major funds of the district as of June 30, 2024. In that first column, the general fund, middle of the page, ended the year about $6.8 million of fund balance. All this, all to the category of unassigned. There are different buckets that we can draw fund balance into. And what that, through those categories, tells you is how that money can be used in the future. Again, our fund is all unassigned, which means it is your true resource fund, all $6.8 million is... I like to take that unassigned category into your total senses, which you can find on page seven. The general fund had just under 40.5 million dollar expenses. So if you take that 6.8, we divide it by the 40.5, we get 17% of your, of your operating is to do your repairs. I love that number, somewhere between 10 and 25% so you're running in line with a good financial decision. I have communities that are about 10%, well, 25, and what's important is to be aware of there, and understand how that is being used if you are those millions in fund balance. The past year in the general fund, you did add a fund balance, so you added $500,000. So, the takeaway there is strong financial position, and we added a fund balance this The other comment that's in for you is a reported insights letter. This is required communications that we need to have with you as the authority body. This lays out the various responsibilities of management and us as your auditors. They'll discuss is what our audit process was, how is risk over the significant transaction cycles of the district, what areas we audit procedures over, and have we had any unusual findings, we would use this mechanism to communicate that view. We continue to have the two material weaknesses that we discussed in prior years, being the fact that we prepared that financial statement document that I referenced earlier. 95% of municipalities, the school districts that I work with, have their auditors prepare that. And so what that is telling you is again, you don't have a CD on staff that is specialized in account and accounting, and the cost effect to do that isn't necessary. So you made the choice to outsource that responsibility. A little into that is what most districts and municipalities are doing. And under our professional standards, we just have to make you aware that if you've made that choice. The second one, material weakness relates to the capital. Since we reported the numbers that are used within that financial statement document, Mark and Ryan are working on a plan, and I believe they've talked with them to do a reassessment over the values that make up the district, and that capital asset category. And I, I hope that will be cleared and will be... Continuing on in there, we do have some required communications around the audit process and the steps we went through. We list out if there are any accounting principles within there. There were no new pronouns, facility words for the management, and we will certainly run it ahead of you to this year. We'll continue to be, look at the future, make sure we're supporting management and making sure that they're staying up to date with the necessary accounting principles. List out the accounting estimates that are part of that financial statement document that management provided, if there's parting, or ultimately, themselves to calculations. I'm happy to note they're all here, neutral and non-biased, meaning that at the end of the day, they're appropriate to be within that document. There's a section that talks about if there were disagreements during the audit process. Happy to note that there were none, and truthfully, had we had issues, we were aware of them long before receiving this document and making a presentation, where we received nothing but cooperation from Ryan and Paul and their support teams as we navigated through the audit process. It went very, very smooth, and it's always good to work with them. They put a couple of labor in long before the audit starts, and the key takeaway in that is we're not identifying significant journal entries throughout the audit process. Tells me that information that they're providing you throughout the year is sound, let me find that decision time. And if there's any compliments that I can give to the client is to be able to tell them that the information that the authority body is using is reliable, and it's to again, the amount of time that they put into, in that wasn't necessarily what it was. And Ryan walked into it, they certainly grabbed brains, navigated through some transition points of, and I'm sure they just tried them and certainly made huge strides. So, again, appreciate the opportunity and all the efforts that they've done in us getting to work with, with them. Lastly, there's a section about non-test services, these would be non-autot services. So, for example, us preparing the financial statements, assisting through the single audit process with some of the regulatory requirements in reporting. Why it's important that I assess all the non-autot services is that at the end of the day, in order for, like, there's clearly an eye to provide to the opinions that I have referenced, I have to be able to determine that we're independent. I have to provide those services, which I'm happy to note that we, that we are, that we are. So, again, Clean Mill House, high level assurance that I can provide you, and nothing but appreciation for, for whatever you did throughout the audit process with the district. So with that, I'll pause, and if you have any questions, we'd be happy, or if there's anything that you wanted to add.
Any questions from any board members? Paul, you did such a nice job, we have no questions.
I'm good, looking, it's a privilege to work with everybody, and thanks for having me.
Appreciate it. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Paul.
You too. Bye.
Any questions for Ryan?
Congratulations.
Thank you. It's always nice to get that part of the year done.
I mean, not only did he, he have some great things to say about our audit, he had some great things to say about you, so thank you for all your hard work this year and making that happen.
Yeah, much appreciated.
It's, it's always nice to see no significant issues or anything like that on a list on an audit like that, so keep up the good work.
I will do that. I have a lot of help in the background for this, so.
Thank you.
All right, appreciate it. 8.3, open enrollment space availability.
All right, everybody should have in their board packet a memo that Tiffany Spawnholz, our Director of Student Services, put together. So, I will quarterback this tonight in her absence. So in regards to the determination of space for open enroll, open enrollment applications pursuant to Board Policy 5113, as well as state statute, our board has the opportunity and requirement, bless you, to set essentially open enrollment seats every January for both regular education and special education. So in reviewing our current student enrollment, anticipated ratios, et cetera, the regular education limits have been, are being recommended as such. On that document, you see 4K through 5th grade no limit reference, grade 6, 30, 7, 25, grade 8, 30, grade 9, 30, grade 10, 25, grade 11, 25, grade 12, 0. On the second page of that memo, Tiffany and her team go through a caseload factor, review caseloads, and the requirements associated with providing the services for those students, as well as our staffing, as well as the current needs projected and moving forward. Based on that review, what you see is, in the area of special education, we would be recommending that the board sets the available seats to zero throughout for special education. Going back to regular education, I just wanted to reference that no limit reference for 4K through 5th. Again, based on the limits that we set, we, we don't typically, actually, ever since I've been here, I don't recall ever hitting a limit. We set that to make sure that, you know, should we, that that's a little bit of a stopgap, to make sure that we're not creating an additional staffing need through open enrollment. So knowing that we're not anticipated to hit any limits, the no limit provides us some additional flexibility to allow us to accept new open enrollment students that should come in beyond the board's approval timeline. So, in other words, once you set the limits, for example, that you see in some other grades, that means that in this current window right now, because open enrollment's really not ever completely closed, that allows, would allow us to accept new open enrollees in that grade, in those grade bands, up through the time period of the traditional open enrollment period. If there's caps in place, then once you make the decision tonight on what the projections would be, if there is a limited cap, that means that there's no opportunity, even if there's room, to receive those students. So we're basically saying that we'll continue to receive by doing this elementary age students throughout the duration, even up till the traditional open enrollment period. Any questions for me, or that I can deflect to somebody else?
So we just need a motion then to approve this?
Yep, looking for a motion to approve these space, open enrollment space determinations as presented.
Okay, also move.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Ask for an all in favor.
Aye.
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 Wasn't very... All those not, same sign.
Much better.
All right, much better. All right, moving on to 8.4, donation acceptance. Welcome back.
All right, so tonight I get to present donation acceptance, once again, from Walmart of Beaver Dam. Walmart reached out in December asking if there was a need for any cube shelving in our classrooms. Mr. Marshall sent out a survey to all the buildings for any educators that wish to have a brand-new cube shelving for their classroom, any building, conference rooms, offices, et cetera. He had a response, there were, there was about, a request of about 40 shelving units, which Walmart granted every single one of those requests, and the donation, the donation totaled about $1,924. So tonight, Walmart's making this generous, generous donation that exceeds the amount of $1,000, and in accordance with Board Policy 7230, the board must approve this, this generous donation.
I make a motion, we accept this donation as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second then, to accept the donation as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to reports by the Board of Education. We'll start out with 9.1, our student rep report. Max?
Perfect, thank you. The past month at the high school has been good for students in the district, particularly with holiday break coming up, that happened. But before that, student organizations celebrated the holidays through fun activities or concerts for the music department, helping them gear up for it. And with Christmas and New Year on a Wednesday, we got a longer holiday break this year, so that was nice. But this allowed students to relax and refresh their minds before going into a busy next couple of weeks. Semester one is ending this week, which has students finishing up assignments from semester and gearing up for final exams. Those exams are happening this week, Thursday and Friday, and then their semester grades will be finalized in the following days. Due this, due to this semester ending, extracurricular activities have slowed down a little bit temporarily, but are about to pick back up. Winter sports teams are continuing to have strong showings as they reach the mid-season mark. The band and orchestra are preparing for an annual tradition of stringfling and parade of bands. These events are happening on January 20th and 21st respectively. These events are a cool opportunity for students to show off their musical talents while connecting with other schools in the district by performing a district-wide combined concert. The end of the semester also helps us look forward to next school year, where 9th, 10th, and 11th graders will begin selecting courses by, for next year at the end of this month. And 8th graders are also starting to begin their transition to high school with a tour around the high school coming up in this next month or so, and they will also have the opportunity to attend Gearing Up for High School. This is an event where student organizations have an opportunity to showcase what the high school all has to offer for the middle schools and their parents, as well as the parents and middle schoolers have another opportunity to go around the high school. There will also be a panel discussion with current Beaver Dam High School students, where the middle schoolers have opportunities to ask the students questions, that it's not just what they're hearing from staff, but also from their peers and students. And as semester one comes to a close, I look forward to attending more schools in the second semester to achieve a greater understanding of district-wide happenings and include them in my reports going forward.
Thanks, Max. Good job.
I believe you were Student of the Week a couple, or FFA?
Yeah.
Student of the Week, right? Couple of weeks ago?
Yeah.
And I just want to say, based on reading, that I got to completely agree with Sanlot and Prime Reb. I'm, I'm okay with that. Any other questions?
Great job.
All right, thank you very much. We did not have operations or teaching and learning. Next scheduled committee meetings are January 27, and we will move on to 9.4, WASB Proposed 2025 Resolutions.
As you guys all know, that convention is coming next week, and at that convention, we act on resolutions and amendments to resolutions. You should have a copy of all the resolutions that are up for, for either to get passed or amended in your board packet. I will not, I am a representative for this, and I'm going to be out of town next week and not be able to attend the convention. Marge is going to take my spot, thankfully, so I don't, I, in the past, you guys have given the person that does a guidance on what you would like or not like, so I would ask that, if you have anything specifically that stands out, that you, that you got a strong opinion on, and how Marge should vote on it, I encourage you to reach out for her, to her. Otherwise, in the past, you've kind of just gave the person that was attending the delegate assembly their own discretion, so. With that, I guess I don't have anything else unless you guys got anything for me.
Just so you know, there are 12 proposed...
Yep.
...resolutions for 2025, so.
A couple more amendments.
Yeah, right, from previous things.
Yeah, like I said, it's all in your board packet. Number 10 in the board packet, so.
So if you have any questions, comments, direction, please let Marge know.
And thank you, Marge, for taking... And thank you, Marge, for taking my spot.
Sure.
I have a funny feeling when you accepted to be the delegate for, you already knew you were gonna be on vacation.
No, I did not.
We just want to know if the meet's gonna be as long as it was last year.
By, by the way, it looks like, I don't think this will be quite too bad. I think after that one fiasco that we had, that we didn't get all the way through, that they kind of narrowed it down.
I think they put a, almost put a clamp on something, yeah.
Yeah. There's a time limit of five hours, Marge.
I, I've done this in the past, so I do know how these things go.
Mark or Mary, do we need to let them know that it's not gonna be me, so Marge can get in? Mary did.
Mary did.
You did, okay. All right, thank you.
All right, any other final comments? All right, we'll move on to 9.5 and 9.6. We'll just combine them. Any engagement opportunities or recognition the board wants to share out. This is your opportunity.
I guess I can go first. I did the high school tour, so thank you, it was a really good tour, especially the personalization that I got to see the ag department. Appreciate it. We had, Joanne and I sat in on the first core meeting for the middle school build, so that was informative. We're moving forward with that. And also toured a couple of middle schools this past week with some of our admin team, so.
I have a couple as well. At Christmas time, I had the opportunity to see SWAS on, not SWAS, good old acapella, on their national tour around Beaver Dam. And it was really nice to see how great they represent our high school and our music department. So it was nice to see them. I caught them at the Kiwanis Christmas meeting, so that was very nice. And then I also wanted to recognize Dave Latch, who received the Lifetime Achievement Award from the National Association of Agricultural Educators. He had a 35-year career, I think was it all in Beaver Dam or a lot?
I think most of it was in Beaver Dam.
I think it was in Beaver Dam. And part of his success was creating a curriculum focused on science concepts that helped his students to succeed and earn credits beyond just that program. And if success is measured by number of students that achieved recognition at state and national levels, it is absolutely certain that Dave Latch was an extremely successful ag teacher and continues to represent FFA well through his history presentations and through his love of that group. And I'm sure, Max, maybe you or John have something to add to that.
No, I just, you know, I had, I had Dave, and he was an exceptional teacher. And he actually was, and he is still a leader in the ag industry in various things. And it's quite an honor, well-deserving for him.
I never had Mr. Latch as a teacher, but he's obviously still around. It was the FFA's 98th birthday, and he came to give all classrooms a presentation. And his whole basement, everyone tells him he should open up a museum because he has so much FFA artifacts. And like, if national FFA ever needs anything, they go to him, "Oh, do you have this?" Because he has like first FFA jackets, like all sorts of cool stuff. And like, I'm friends with state FFA officers and one national FFA officer, and they all say that Dave's a legend. So we were lucky to have him at Beaver Dam, and so, yeah.
Nice, thank you.
I'm sure his wife would like to see him open a museum and get it out of her basement.
I just wanted to recognize Wilson School during their Christmas performance. It was fantastic. It was, you know, kind of moving because it was gonna be their last one as the school, of Wilson School, and they just did a phenomenal job with that Christmas program. And then my other activity was wellness committee recently, so we're back on track for the new year, getting, going things, getting things done there.
I think adding on to the Wilson, I think it was, who was there? Me and Marge and, we also got to stick our heads in and see the new daycare, and it was pretty cool to see all those kiddos and to see how the school interacts with them.
Yep.
They also got to go visit with Santa after the concert along with the Wilson kids.
They did, yeah.
So it was neat to see that they've just become a part of that school this year as well.
Nice. I got out, I saw a varsity wrestling match against Loda. That was pretty exciting. It didn't end well for us, but it was an exciting match. Saw the girls varsity hockey team play the Ice Bears, I think they played. Another exciting, exciting little event. And I've seen some positively hoops basketball here recently. Big shout out to both the boys and girls teams, you know, that have had success. They're placing in some of the tournaments that are in, so.
Nice.
Yep.
Nice.
I was at the school of the month and had the tour and some, like Russ mentioned, some great discussions with the staff there, so appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, I was at the school of the month too. Really enjoyed the tech area. The instructor was gonna let me, you know, peek into the welding booth. I've seen welding before, I used to work at Mac, but that was pretty nice of him to let us try to watch if we wanted. And my husband works at Mac, so I just really appreciate, you know, that, that whole increase in, you know, how, knowing how important that stuff is for society. And then, I remember when it was SWAS too, Joanne.
Yeah, I know, right? We date ourselves.
Yeah, I went to the band concert, which also had orchestra. I think that was the first time I saw the orchestra, and they were fantastic. So I really enjoyed that. Went to a couple basketball games, bowling tournaments. One more win, we'll go to state.
Nice, it's awesome.
We need to mention, when we were at the high school, we walked into the English classroom, well, yeah, and a student was in the middle of a speech, and he kept going.
Yeah, that was awesome.
He did a really nice job, and there was a whole crowd of us in there. So I'm not sure that young man's name, but well done.
We all walked in real silent, and the first time he popped his head up, he realized he had another six or seven people in the room, so.
Tunch of old people.
Yeah, he did well. Others? I just wanna, since Isaac wasn't at the high school, I just want you to know that you missed absolutely awesome muffins, like just completely filled with blueberries. So you completely missed out on that. Well, next, next year, I definitely would make sure the high school is on your list to make sure you get there.
I've signed up for all the rest of the visits for the rest of the year, so I'm not getting shut out anymore. I was a little late on that while high school wanted. Sure enough, I couldn't get a spot, so appreciate the heads up though, thank you.
I even got a text from one to make sure I was going.
Could I at least bring a bag of muffin?
You guys covered just about everything. I just wanted to add a couple of pieces. One, just our student groups continue to exhibit wonderful volunteerism and outreach in our community, even beyond the holidays. We talked about a lot of things gearing up, but that continues. I know later this month, I believe, Pasta with a Purpose, I believe it's gonna be towards the end of January. A lot of other outreach, so continue to commend them and their advisors for doing that work. And then I want to thank all of our project team members. There's a lot of different people involved and engaged at a lot of different levels. That doesn't mean that their other jobs stop, so that's an added engagement. Sure, it's an opportunity, but that's extra time, extra thought. So I want to thank all of those folks and then remind the public that essentially every month, the operations committee meets. They will be talking at that committee about the status of the project. They'll also be presented with a draft of the public brief that will be published on a monthly basis. And then that brief, which will highlight different, different facets of the, of the project, some kind of key takeaways, benchmarks, milestones, et cetera, as well as some financial highlights, will be presented on a monthly basis. So, and then at the following board business meeting through the operations report too, there's another opportunity for conversation that engages the whole board. But people can look for, on our website, those, those updates. And following this upcoming operations committee meeting, that first monthly brief to the community will essentially be published. So I want to recognize everybody who's involved in the project and providing feedback, and then also thank our community for being engaged and, and keeping track of things if they so choose.
All right?
I move the board recess in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, grant one primary seat, considering employment, promotion, compensation, performance, evaluation data of any public employee for which government provides jurisdiction or exercise of responsibility specifically to discuss specific employees.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to go into closed session. Roll call, please.
Marge Jordanson?
Yes.
John Hall?
Yes.
Mary Crum?
Yes.
Bria Macy?
Yes.
Lisa Spencer?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Heather Schultz?
Yes.
Frances Jestine?
Yes.
Isaac?
Yes.
All right, we will go into closed session and be back in a little bit.
All right, we will go into closed session and be back in a little bit.
All right, we are back in open session and we'll move on to 12.1.
I have one resignation for you tonight effective January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty five. I also have two retirements for your consideration. The first one is Katie Loudy Sunderland. She's a special education teacher at the middle school. Her retirement would be effective the end of the school year and she has been with us for thirty-one years. Mary Kay Streblo is a first grade teacher at Washington Elementary. Retirement effective the end of the school year and she has been with us for thirty-three years.
I move the board approve the resignation and retirements as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the resignation and retirements as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right.
There is one leave of absence for your consideration tonight.
I move the board approve the leave of absence as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve the leave of absence as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right.
There is one leave of absence for your consideration tonight.
I move the board approve the leave of absence as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve the leave of absence as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign.
There are two appointments on the agenda tonight. Both are long-term subpositions. The first one is Summer Salatell. As a long-term substitute teacher, she would be filling in for our full-time substitute teacher who has moved into another long-term role for a leave. So that would be Summer. Long-term leave or her subbing spot would be one-ten through four-fourteen. The second one is a rehire of her recent retiree. Jeff Slaton would be filling in as a health teacher as a long-term sub at our high school from March twenty-fourth until April fifteenth for a leave at our high school.
I move the board approve the appointments as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resignation and retirements as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right.
There is one leave of absence for your consideration tonight.
I move the board approve the leave of absence as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve the leave of absence as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right.
There is one leave of absence for your consideration tonight.
I move the board approve the leave of absence as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve the leave of absence as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign.
There are two appointments on the agenda tonight. Both are long-term subpositions. The first one is Summer Salatell. As a long-term substitute teacher, she would be filling in for our full-time substitute teacher who has moved into another long-term role for a leave. So that would be Summer. Long-term leave or her subbing spot would be one-ten through four-fourteen. The second one is a rehire of her recent retiree. Jeff Slaton would be filling in as a health teacher as a long-term sub at our high school from March twenty-fourth until April fifteenth for a leave at our high school.
I move the board approve the appointments as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resignation and retirements as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right.
There is one leave of absence for your consideration tonight.
I move the board approve the leave of absence as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve the leave of absence as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right.
There is one leave of absence for your consideration tonight.
I move the board approve the leave of absence as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve the leave of absence as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right.
There is one leave of absence for your consideration tonight.
I move the board approve the leave of absence as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve the leave of absence as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right.
There is one leave of absence for your consideration tonight.
I move the board approve the leave of absence as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve the leave of absence as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right.
There is one leave of absence for your consideration tonight.
I move the board approve the leave of absence as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve the leave of absence as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right.
There is one leave of absence for your consideration tonight.
I move the board approve the leave of absence as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve the leave of absence as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right.
There is one leave of absence for your consideration tonight.
I move the board approve the leave of absence as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve the leave of absence as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right.
There is one leave of absence for your consideration tonight.
I move the board approve the leave of absence as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve the leave of absence as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right.
There is one leave of absence for your consideration tonight.
I move the board approve the leave of absence as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve the leave of absence as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right.
There is one leave of absence for your consideration tonight.
I move the board approve the leave of absence as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve the leave of absence as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right.
There is one leave of absence for your consideration tonight.
I move the board approve the leave of absence as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve the leave of absence as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right.
There is one leave of absence for your consideration tonight.
I move the board approve the leave of absence as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve the leave of absence as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right.
There is one leave of absence for your consideration tonight.
I move the board approve the leave of absence as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve the leave of absence as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right.
There is one leave of absence for your consideration tonight.
I move the board approve the leave of absence as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve the leave of absence as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right.
There is one leave of absence for your consideration tonight.
I move the board approve the leave of absence as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve the leave of absence as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right.
There is one leave of absence for your consideration tonight.
I move the board approve the leave of absence as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve the leave of absence as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right.
There is one leave of absence for your consideration tonight.
I move the board approve the leave of absence as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve the leave of absence as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right.
There is one leave of absence for your consideration tonight.
I move the board approve the leave of absence as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve the leave of absence as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right.
There is one leave of absence for your consideration tonight.
I move the board approve the leave of absence as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve the leave of absence as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right.
There is one leave of absence for your consideration tonight.
I move the board approve the leave of absence as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve the leave of absence as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right.
There is one leave of absence for your consideration tonight.
I move the board approve the leave of absence as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve the leave of absence as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right.
There is one leave of absence for your consideration tonight.
I move the board approve the leave of absence as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve the leave of absence as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right.
There is one leave of absence for your consideration tonight.
I move the board approve the leave of absence as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve the leave of absence as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right.
There is one leave of absence for your consideration tonight.
I move the board approve the leave of absence as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve the leave of absence as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right.
There is one leave of absence for your consideration tonight.
I move the board approve the leave of absence as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve the leave of absence as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right.
There is one leave of absence for your consideration tonight.
I move the board approve the leave of absence as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve the leave of absence as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right.
There is one leave of absence for your consideration tonight.
I move the board approve the leave of absence as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve the leave of absence as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right.
There is one leave of absence for your consideration tonight.
I move the board approve the leave of absence as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve the leave of absence as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right.
There is one leave of absence for your consideration tonight.
I move the board approve the leave of absence as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve the leave of absence as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right.
There is one leave of absence for your consideration tonight.
I move the board approve the leave of absence as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve the leave of absence as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right.
There is one leave of absence for your consideration tonight.
I move the board approve the leave of absence as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve the leave of absence as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign. All right.
There is one leave of absence for your consideration tonight.
I move the board approve the leave of absence as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second then to approve the leave of absence as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those not, same sign.
There are two appointments on the agenda tonight. Both are long-term subpositions. The first one is Summer Salatell. As a long-term substitute teacher, she would be filling in for our full-time substitute teacher who has moved into another long-term role for a leave. So that would be Summer. Long-term leave or her subbing spot would be one-ten through four-fourteen. The second one is a rehire of her recent retiree. Jeff Slaton would be filling in as a health teacher as a long-term sub at our high school from March twenty-fourth until April fifteenth for a leave at our high school.
I move the board approve the appointments as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the appointments as presented. Roll call vote please.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Twelve point four administrator contracts.
Yes, our odd-year admin contracts are due up for consideration of approval by the board. So at this time, I would recommend that the following administrators receive new contracts, two thousand and twenty-five through two thousand and twenty-seven, from our board. Selena Eldon, Ryan Cashman, John Casper, Kaitlyn Dwyer, Ashley Janzma, Brandon Kraus, Troy Marshall, Jesse Peters, Wyatt Tramberg, Russell Tronson, and Paul Wilson. Effective date would be July one, two thousand and twenty-five.
I move the board approve the administrator contracts for the presented administration effective July one, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second then to approve those administrator contracts. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right, thirteen point one.
I move for payment and claims in the amount of five million, fifty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty-five cents.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second then to approve payment and claims. Roll call vote again.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
All right, a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second.